Welcome, everybody, to the regular session Monroe County Council for December. We'll get started by doing a roll call of all of our council member present. So when I call your name, please indicate that you are present. Councilmember Decker. Councilmember Hawk. Looks like she's here.
I see her name, but I, yeah.
Member Hawk.
Here.
Okay. Councilmember Iverson?
Here.
Councilmember McKim?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
And Councilmember Wiltz?
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum here. We will get started with our first item on the agenda, and that is, as we always do with our regular session, the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe our T S D department has our flag. And there we go. Beautiful. All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag, United States of America.
To the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. I do see that Mr. Decker has joined us. He's, he has now entered the meeting. Welcome, Mr. Decker.
I am late.
No problem. We're on, we just finished the pledge, so we're going to move on now to item number three, which is our public comment for items not on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public who would like to make public comment this evening? Please use the raise hand feature. It looks like we have Mr. Shelton. Welcome, Mr. Shelton.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton with the Chamber speaking at the moment on behalf of both the Chamber and the CASA program. Since this is the last public comment opportunity before Christmas, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas. And then because it's the last public opportunity before the middle of January, with, at which time, applications for our next CASA training will be due. I want to remind you and the public that we're going to have a training that starts February 9th or run through March 3rd. We still got a big need for CASAs. We've got 61 children on 25 cases at the moment waiting for a CASA. We just finished a training.
Still thinking about the election president.
Help with that. But we will still need more people to serve, volunteer to service CASAs. I've been a CASA for eight years, just finished my eighth year, and I want to take advantage of that just to tell people what a typical, I think, pretty typical case is like, except it went a little long. Back in 2016, a two and a half year old little girl and a four year old little boy were removed from their parents because there was domestic violence in the house and heavy use of drugs. I was asked to take on the case in 2018 when the lady who had started with it was about to have her first baby. So I've been on the case for two and a half years. It's lasted for four and a half years, which is longer than usual. And during this four and a half years, these two children, who remember started at two and a half and four, have been in 25 different placements between, total between the two of them, which is pretty unusual. And it's not because really that things went so terrible that we did have some bad placements, but also the parents kept almost doing a good enough job to be reunited before they finally gave up. And because they've given up, these two children will be adopted a week from today. And I got to tell you that that is very satisfying. It makes up for all the heartache and worry and work that went on in the last two years by me and I'm sure by the lady who did it before me. But thanks to Judge Hill, Judge Galvin, DC, a couple of DCS reps, myself and the lady, and a whole bunch of service providers, these kids are going into permanent homes where they've been now for over a year. And the people there that are adopting them have just been super in dealing with. These kids have heads, have been acting out. They've got some things to get over and they're getting over. So people think out there, think about it. This is a really good volunteer opportunity. You can do good for some little people and you can help our community. So February 9th through March 3rd, applications will be due in the middle of January. So thank you for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton, for the advocacy. We, we know the need is very great and encourage the public to look into that as an option and always appreciate hearing of the positive outcome. So thank you for sharing that information with Council tonight. Do we have any other? Any other members of the public who'd like to provide comment for items not on the agenda tonight? I do not see any further public comments. So we'll now move on to item number four on our agenda, which is department updates. Do we have any departments? I believe Ms. Purdy is available and would like to make a public comment. Angie Purdy, Commissioner's Administrator is with us. Or perhaps it's Commissioner Thomas as well, too.
Welcome both.
We're gonna, we're gonna tag team if Angie's on. Angie, are you on?
I think I'm on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, wonderful. I'm going to try not to look at this because when I look at it, I get myself all confused. It all goes to, this goes very badly. So I'm here, just to kind of remind you guys, I had sent an email out at the, earlier this month, asking you to kind of look at the Commissioner's job descriptions for two new positions, Building Manager as well as a Border Commissioners Mechanic. I forwarded those job descriptions to you. And we will be coming back to Council on the 22nd to ask for funding for the Fleet and Building Manager and then to also answer any questions that there may be in association with the mechanic position. The mechanic position actually has been appropriated by Council for the 2021 budget. However, I would strongly request that we, that you approve the Fleet and Building Manager position because otherwise I will be the supervisor for the mechanic. And I mean, I'm pretty handy, but I'm not that handy. So I'd like to definitely get that Fleet and Building Manager position. But also I know that during our PAC meeting, there were some questions about the mechanic and the costs that may be associated with that position because those, those were not included in the budget for 2021. And so we'll have some of that information for you. But I did send you information today along with kind of a reminder that this is coming up for you guys. And if you would like, I can hit you some high points right now or we can just wait and you can deal with it on the 22nd.
I think, yeah, any, any, I did see the email that was sent and I haven't had a chance to go over it in great detail, but any additional info that you'd like to provide, I think, would be helpful. Sure, that'd be great.
So a quick, a quick look at Google. To give the basic supply needs to a garage for a mechanic is about $50,000. So that would be your front end cost to set up a garage, if you will. There was some conversation about tools, whether or not the county should provide tools or mechanics provide their own tools, did some investigation into that. And there's basically kind of two camps. Neither of them are wrong. Some people like requiring a mechanic to provide their own tools and then the county providing a tool allowance, which is taxed for that person. And in my opinion, for what it's worth, I think that if the county was to have a mechanic, that it'd be preferable for the county to provide the tools and not to provide a tool salary or addition to that mechanic. Also, the Commissioners are currently looking at an alternate option that just kind of became available to us where we're looking at a fleet entity. This entity, in addition to providing vehicles from Monroe County Government, we could lease, we could purchase, they also provide maintenance. And so I'm in the process of giving them information of our current fleet so that they can give us an idea as to how they could help Monroe County if they could or not. And this actually includes sheriff's vehicles as well as it, any other vehicles. The only vehicles that they don't do are the tandems, the tri axles. So this particular option is very interesting. I've talked to the Administrator from Hamilton County. They've just reached out to start this process. I've not spoken with the Sheriff in Hancock County, but I've been advised that that Sheriff's Department uses this entity for their sheriff vehicles. And the nice thing about it is it maintains all the records. They have currently 26 shops in Monroe County in which any vehicle, like if somebody was driving and they had a problem with their vehicle, they could just take it into, I don't know, a particular shop. We have, they'll have a list of them. They take it in, those people will do the assessment, the repairs, and then depending on the program, we'll either get billed for the repairs or we will just be part of our ongoing maintenance kind of program with them. So just to let you know that we're looking at some other options. And the other thing that I would like to say about that particular option from, from my perspective is if, if we do go with the Fleet Company, that gives us time to put more, gives us time to determine if we really do in fact want to have a mechanic or if this would be actually a better solution to our needs. So it gives us a little more flexibility, but those are the things that we have at this point in time. And then the only thing I'd like to reiterate is that regardless of whether or not Monroe County has a mechanic or enters into an agreement with a fleet entity, we still really need that Fleet and Building Manager because they will then still act as the contact with the Fleet's company. So that's kind of all I have at this point in time. Please send any questions you have to me because I'm really hoping to not attend your meeting on the 22nd. And I think Commissioner Thomas has said she would, so I feel really bad about that, but I'd like to be able to answer all your questions ahead of time. So, and if need be, I can certainly be there.
Great, thanks, Ms. Purdy, for the overview there. And yes, councilmembers, please, if you have any questions after reviewing that material tonight and that Angie had sent via email, please contact her with any specific questions so that we can get those answered quickly. And I believe that.
So I have.
Commissioner Thomas, did you have a?
Yes, quick update. It sort of piggybacks off of what we talked about at the last meeting when I went over how we are allocating some of the CARES money. I just wanted to give you an update to bring you up to speed. You'll be seeing on the 22nd, the new, a new agreement with the Township Assistance Fund. We have already allocated to, to them $75,000 out of the 100 we initially prepared. And we have since passed the, a new agreement, and that will be before you, at the end of the month, to increase that to 200,000 through next June. And so we're at 75,000 for Township Assistance. If anybody in the sound of our voices has trouble paying for utilities, rent, the basics of life, please contact your Township Trustee as soon as possible. They have funding to help you. Also, an update on our businesses and not-for-profits. There was a bit of a flurry of activity with the CARES funding for businesses. And as of today, we're at 322,264.63. And we have begun a second program that has, with a total cap of 30,000. We were operating under a $20,000 cap per business and per social service agency. So any businesses out there, there's an application online at co.monegro.in.us. Fill it out, get the paperwork together, get your receipts together. This is for COVID-related expenses, non-personnel, that have not been covered by other grants or loans. And for taxing units, we are at 85,712.89. So I just wanted to provide you that update. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Any questions from councilmembers for Commissioner Thomas on that update? Okay, very good. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Yep, we will talk to you soon. Okay, and just real quick here, I'm going to ask that we make a quick modification to the agenda. It's been discovered that a step in the approval of a new grant was inadvertently left off the agenda. So I would like to move that we add item number 10B1, which would be to amend the 2021 salary ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Michelle, did you want to? Did you have any, any additional information to add there as well?
Yes, as I was going through the agenda. And I worked with Troy Hatfield with regards to the 2021 salary ordinance in making sure that his grant information was forwarded to 2021. We missed adding this fund number to that ordinance to be approved, and that is fund number 9147, which tonight they're asking for the creation of these lines as well as appropriations. And so after you approve this grant, I hope, that we also need to amend the ordinance in order to pay these employees that's going to be coming out of this grant. So we need to just add this to the 2021 salary ordinance.
Thank you. So that's kind of the background on this. Any, any questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Miller, can we have a roll call vote to amend the agenda?
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Munson? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so go back and just do one last check. Are there any further department updates?
I believe Penny Cottle.
Yes, okay.
Wants to make an update.
Yes, and we would love to hear this update. Hello, Ms. Cottle?
Good evening. Thank you for, thanks for allowing me to, to give you an update. So Monroe County will remain in orange this week. We, you know, we're still in orange, but we're moving in the wrong direction. And today, our positivity rate is at 10.2%, and we are adding about 100 new cases a day. And we are losing a person a day from COVID. So we are seeing about one death a day. We have the tools to stop the spread of this infection. And hopefully, if nothing else will motivate people, the fact that people are dying at the highest rate we've had them in the county will be enough to motivate people to do the things we know we need them to do. So we need people to maintain that six foot distance between others. We need them to wear their face covering. We need them to avoid being around gatherings of people that are not in their own household, large groups. But we are seeing spread among families and people that would, would feel like your social bubble, where you let your guard down. So just remind people not to do that. To stay home when you are ill, so you are not spreading COVID or influenza or anything else, and maintain good hand washing skills. Those things are very important, and they're the tools we have right now to slow the spread of this infection while we wait for vaccine to come, which is coming. But it will take us a while before we get everybody vaccinated that wants to be. So help us protect the health of our community until vaccine is here. We have, our Public Health Clinic has finished their special flu clinics, but it is not too late to get your flu vaccine. You can contact your provider, you can contact the Public Health Clinic and schedule an appointment for that. As we are arranged, the first set of vaccine will come to the hospitals for distribution. It does require very sub-zero temperatures. Once that emergency use authorization is done, those vaccines will be pushed out and the hospitals are the perfect entities to be able to handle that. And they will be pushing out vaccine to our healthcare providers, long, you know, people who are working in long-term care and individuals on the front line. So we will have vaccine starting out, we anticipate, with the approvals in another, within the two weeks and probably within a week. So that's coming very, very soon. That CDS and Walgreens are, the state has partnered with them to ensure that our long-term care facilities, staff and the rest of the vaccine. So that's kind of how the majority of those individuals will be taken care of. For the Health Department, we will start administering vaccines as the next wave of vaccine becomes available. Are yet to be determined just based on what vaccine's available, who those next individuals are, how much vaccine people take. How, and we encourage everyone, when it's available to you, please, please, please consider taking the vaccine. The CDC has updated several different things in the last week. The Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC has released information on masks and youth sports. There's daily activities and going out, lots of other things. So several things have been updated. We'll be sharing those on social media in the next few days. So we invite you to take a look at the CDC's website. One of the things that changed recently was quarantine and the timeframe for quarantine. And I want to just give a little bit of a reference around that. The incubation period for COVID-19 is 14 days, and that is not changing. So the gold standard for quarantine remains at 14 days, right? That there are just now some options for individuals because we know we've been in this a long time. People are often struggling. They may be part of critical infrastructure and they really need to get back to work. Various kinds of circumstances. And so based on what we've learned in this past year, the CDC's made some changes. So again, 14 days still gold standard for quarantine. If you've been exposed and we're waiting for you to see if you get the 14 days is ideal. 10 days is an option as well. So if you don't become symptomatic in 10 days, then we'll go back to work if your employer is willing to use that 10 days. However, it's not a, oh, my quarantine is done and I'm finished. It is, you must wear your mask at all times unless you are at home, just, you know, your family and be wearing it because you are still essentially in quarantine, right? Maintaining that six foot distance, good hand hygiene, all of those things are paramount. You could still be incubating and become infectious to others. So monitoring for symptoms is extremely important if you're using that 10 days. The third option is seven days with a negative test after five days. Now, right now, it probably takes you 48 to 72 hours or more to get your test results back. So I would say right now with the demand for testing, seven days is not much of an option for anybody because you're probably going to be looking at still being in quarantine 10 days, right? In best case scenario. But look at that information, pay attention to it. Things continue to change as we learn more. But from a Health Department standpoint, we will follow CDC guidelines. We will accept any of those if people are following the recommendations of the CDC. But the State Health Department has asked schools to not use the seven day option at all for the time being. Again, it's kind of hard to make that work anyway with the timeframe for testing. But they are allowing them, if they want to do 10 days, they can. Again, 14 days still gold. Our testing site, our community testing site is up. It's going, we want to encourage people to use it. They are starting to take walk-ins, so don't let the fear of not being able to complete your registration online stop you from going. You certainly can. We prefer you to register, complete that so that your visit is short and sweet. You can get in, get out. But if you need help with that, we will accept walk-ins. So the Optum site, those are being extended through January. The state notified us of that today. The other thing with the testing site on Morton, we will be revising the hours to include every Saturday, and we will be posting the holiday hours. So they will be closed on Christmas and New Year's Day, but otherwise they will be open most every day. And again, as I said, they're accepting walk-ins. So those, those are my main updates. And we continue to ask people to, to do their part, and we will get through this.
Thank you very much for all of the very useful information there. And while we have you right now, I just want to, and before we see you again here in a few moments, just check with Council to see if there's any questions. Mr. Iverson, please.
Yeah, Penny, one of the busiest travel times is coming up with Hanukkah, Christmas and other holidays. What is the CDC recommending? And what is, what do you recommend from our Health Department in terms of visiting family and traveling?
Well, you know, that's a tough one. And I think for the most part, it'd still be extremely cautious about that. Traveling in households and gatherings is still risky. And as long as our cases are going up, that is something that each family really needs to, to think about very carefully. Travel can be risky. We're probably just now in the next week or so going to be, what happened Thanksgiving? We'll probably drive the, the message going forward and tell us really if people should consider not traveling at all. But I would say be very cautious, be cautious about where you're going, how you're getting there, all of those things. Some places require quarantine when you come back or testing before you go, those kinds of things. So make sure that you're, you're looking at that. The CDC website does have travel guidance up as well.
Thank you. Anything further? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. In, in terms of the vaccines, do, I have two questions about the vaccines. Number one is, what is the number that will be delivered to our community? And in terms of like per wave or initially? And the second is, is how are we going to be able to track the two dose system?
Oh, good questions. So we, the first of the answer is, we don't know. The hospitals, and boy, I'm going to get that, I think 5,000 doses is what they're expecting in their first shipment. But some of that will be determined on how, how much vaccine is given out. And then that will continue to kind of wade through. So initially, the state determined with, by county, where the healthcare providers and the people that fall into that kind of first priority, what percentage is in which county? And so that initial vaccine that the state gets will be based on those percentages. And then they will determine if we're giving out more vaccine than another area, then we'll get more vaccine. But some of it will be based on what comes to the state as well as what, what we have. And IU Health, Bloomington Hospital is serving several county radius as other hospitals are as well.
Sure.
And then your second question, you're going to have to help me. That was.
The two dose tracking for vaccine.
So we are using a registration system. It will, and I just learned this today. So it will start with SOTEC, which is what we're using for a testing site. But the state is also, they're going to keep them for the testing sites and transition to someone else for the vaccines. And I'm sure it's to provide some balance in that. But there, at any rate, there's an online registration, and so you will register. And before you leave with your first dose, you will have an appointment for your second. So we're not holding any vaccine back. That's being held back, if you will, when they distribute. That's being held back, if you will, when they distribute it to begin with. So the, whatever doses come, 5,000, 50,000, those come out, those are given. And then in a month, we'll get that same amount again. And you, it is important to know that if you get Pfizer on your first dose, you got to get Pfizer on the second or whatever the brand is. And there is only one, I think, that will be a one dose. Everything is second, is two doses. And the second dose is the most important dose. So very important, unlike some of our other vaccines where the second is kind of a booster. The first one's going to get you started. The second one is what's really going to give you the immunity that you need.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Well, Mr. Deckard, yes.
Yeah, sorry, Penny, and this may not even be close to your, your wheelhouse because it concerns the hospital. But I know so much is, so much of this determines on how much our hospital can handle. Do you, off chance, do you know what capacity is right now? Because that really says a lot about what's up to us with your instructions on really what people need to be taken serious.
In terms of their ICUs and, and what have you, they do have a dashboard that is available, I think, for people to look at. The hospital certainly, I, it can't really speak for them. What I do know is that they, you know, they have some capacity. They're seeing people from other places. Brian Shuckney has talked about that on our press conferences. You know, they are taking people from other places. But as a, as a system, you know, they kind of share patients and share loads and move people where they, they have space. But, you know, their staff is stressed. And so they may have capacity to see additional people. Not everybody in ICU is a COVID patient, but I know that many of them are. But it's, it's hard on them.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing further for Ms. Cottle, we will move on next to item number five. We'll see Ms. Cottle here in just a few moments for her request. Now is the time for council liaison updates. Do we have any council members who would like to provide a liaison update? Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, council, last time we met, I brought you up to speed on substance use disorder during the pandemic and the news was not good. Today, I want to bring you information from our tobacco control group here in town. We met today to talk about tobacco use. And of course vaping is a serious issue that's going on right now. We know that vaping and tobacco use is going up. And we just need to keep our eyes on some of the, some of this that's going on during the pandemic. A particular note, percent of adults who smoke is about the same rate in Monroe County as it is in Indiana. In Indiana, it's 21% of adults who smoke. In Monroe County, it's 20% of adults that smoke. One of the, the kind of areas that I wanted to alert you all on is that the percent of pregnant women who smoke in Monroe County is 13%. But the number of the percent of pregnant women who smoke statewide is only 11.5%. So we've got some work to do there. And of course, we know that smoking while pregnant does affect the, the baby. And we know now that there are about 193 births that affected by smoking in terms of low birth weight, SIDS and reduced lung function. And we can even monetize that. We know that the cost of smoking-related births here in our county is about $262,000. The last thing I'll mention is that deaths attributed to smoking is 263 of our neighbors and family members and 28 deaths are due to secondhand smoke. We attribute the economic burden of secondhand smoke to be about $46.1 million. Of course, that's statewide. So just a real quick update there on tobacco use.
Great, thank you, Mr. Iverson. Any other council member reports? Mr. Deckard?
I'll be very quick. I just wanted to say last night I was able to attend along with, I believe, Marjorie Rice was there. Commissioner Thomas was there. Hope I'm not missing anyone. A, the Advisory Council for Community Voices for Health in Monroe County. It's being conducted by CJM. Counselor Wiltz and I serve on this advisory council and, and it's a newer thing for us. But it was a tremendous opportunity, the way that CJM is conducting the, these, these sample meetings that will roll out a little bit later in 2021 and listening to Monroe County voices on their healthcare concerns. And we're all very familiar with CJM and how they do well, what they do. And it's a, I think for folks, we talk a lot about healthcare. I think it's a very empowering roundtable discussion that they have. And it will theoretically and hopefully visit many different portions of this county. Here we are in a pandemic. I know healthcare is always on our minds anyway. I think it, I think Monroe County residents will benefit from this. Look for more as it comes out and Counselor Wiltz and I will be spreading that good word. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Deckard, for your report. Anything further from council members? Yes, Councilmember Wiltz?
I just wanted to mention that Visit Bloomington has provided a really great list of local stores and places that are offering gift certificates. So if you're lucky enough to have money to spare and spend, I'm just putting it out there that shopping locally and dining locally this holiday season would be a really big help to a lot of our local families and businesses. So Visit Bloomington has an online directory, really easy to look through, see all kinds of deals and connect with the websites for those local businesses to get more information.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Wiltz, for that report and important message there. Anybody else before we move on to item six? Okay. So we will now move on to item six, which is our health department.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for a midpoint hire based on Resolution 2015-46, effective 12/6/2020 pay cycle.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Welcome, Ms. Cottle. Would you like to provide any additional background for us?
I would, just, just a little bit. We were very, well, we were very sad when our person that was in this, was our program manager left. Certainly, we promoted from within, leaving our second disease intervention specialist position open. We were very, very lucky, we felt, to find the person who joined our team. And I want to just give you a little background on the skills that they bring to the table to start with. They, they have a history of work in sexual health. They've worked at Columbus Public Health Department in Ohio. They've ran HIV and HCV testing. So they already know how to do those things. They prepared specimens for other STD testing that we do. And those, their bachelor's was in psychology. They have a master's in epidemiology, which is a big benefit to us as well. They've do contact tracing, which is part of the skills of a disease intervention specialist. I would say there are no better trained contact tracers in the country or probably across the world than our disease intervention specialists. They have quality management experience, grant experience. They worked with our DIS and that's kind of, they knew right away when we got that application. It was one that they definitely needed to interview for. So they're, they're used to dealing with grants, program outcomes. And the reason that they were interested in this position, they took a pay cut to come is because they wanted back into direct patient care. So I, you know, even with this midpoint, they are still taking a pay cut. So I think it's well worth the request to bring them in at midpoint.
All right. Thank you for the background and we'll check with council to see if there's any discussion or questions on this request. Anybody have any questions? Mr. McKim?
Yeah, not so much a question, just a, a comment that, just to remind everybody again what the purpose of the midpoint hiring policy is. And it is essentially that when somebody is hired from the outside, we are essentially counting their directly relevant experience at, outside Monroe County government as equivalent to Monroe County government experience. And I think in this case, it clearly applies. You know, that it's, we, we, we hire many people who are fantastic, who are awesome and may even be overqualified for their position. That's not enough to, by itself, to be relevant for a, a midpoint hire. But I think, but when the experience at other health departments, for example, and not necessarily in Indiana, but in Ohio, for example, translate directly to experience in Monroe County, then we count that experience for the perspective of making them a midpoint hire. So I'm, I'm certainly in support of this. I just want to bring everybody back to what the purpose of that, that resolution was.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Wiltz?
I'm going to preface this by saying I'm not, not opposed necessarily, although it might sound like it when I ask my question. Midpoint on the salary grid, is it equivalent, Jeff, remind me, to a certain number of years?
Three, three years.
Three years of experience. And the person that was hired, looks like they finished their degree just a year and a half ago. Although they were working kind of all along and it looks like they did a couple of summers as an intern at the public, in a, in a health department, it looks like. I know Ohio sets, is probably set up differently. So Penny, I guess my question is, given just those numbers, like three years' worth of experience versus what I'm seeing is not quite three years. But you feel that that's still warranted?
They just finished their masters. They court in 2019. So that was their masters in epidemiology that they finished. But yeah, I mean, they're coming in able to do HIV testing, hepatitis testing, to do contact tracing. They're coming in, certainly there are things that, you know, they'll learn. But they come in knowing the, the grants, they've come from actually a partner agency. So we've worked with them, they understand our grants. So they, they come with a lot of knowledge that someone fresh out of school or, you know, from another entity may not have. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, no, I, I think so. I, yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to get to know better where and how we make these determinations.
Well, I will tell you that I, you know, not that I haven't ever asked for one of these before, but they're kind of a pain. So I'm not asking if, if I, if I don't feel it's warranted.
Mr. Iverson?
Penny, this is, this is a great opportunity for the health department. What a great find and I'm just really happy. And one of the things I just wanted to mention was that even before the Fauci effect, we were seeing a rise in people getting like master's degrees in epidemiology. And industry has taken notice and this person did not need to come to public service, but they did. And I think that's fantastic. So, well done.
Anything further from council or Ms. Cottle? All right, is there any public comment? And seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the midpoint hire request, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonwar?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, counsel, I'll go ahead and move for items B and C on the agenda. So I'll move to approve the request to amend the 2020 salary ordinance and the 2021 salary ordinance to update fund 1159-0000, health department, account line 10108, disease intervention specialist at PAT2 to a midpoint hire.
Second.
All right, Ms. Cottle, anything to add on this? Okay.
Pretty basic.
Covered it, covered it early. Any other questions or comments from council? Any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonwar?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you. And so we'll, we'll have one more item here with the health department. I'd like to have a discussion now with Ms. Cottle and the health department regarding their need for a fund-to-fund transfer for a compensatory time payout.
Yes. And this again is just kind of bringing it to your attention. I know you wouldn't be able to, to take it up until next meeting. But I came to you earlier in the year, we did a comp time payout for our public health coordinator. But COVID has not slowed down, nor has she with the testing site that she has been integral in, in getting set up and now managing our plans for vaccine distribution or, or nurses. And our public health, our educator and public health information officer, they both have been instrumental and are just working tirelessly. So they have both unfortunately racked up a lot of comp time. And because we've had some vacancies this year, we do have the funds in the, the budget to go ahead and pay that out. And I'm asking that you allow us to pay that comp time out. Again, I can't, you know, they would be absent next year if we made them take it. So they need to be paid for it and want to pay them this year as opposed to waiting till next year when the cost is higher, quite frankly.
Thank you. So let me, let me check with Ms. Shell and perhaps Ms. Rice as well, too. What is the, could you remind council what the procedure is for this? How do we?
Okay. What happens is there is a transfer from their fund account into our, which is the council comp timeline. And then that way, council has always requested that any comp time payouts be filtered through them so that they can track it, keep and approve it and track it that way. So we've done it that way the last two or three ti- I think we've done it maybe three times this year, I believe. The only problem with this one is I wasn't really, I've been kind of out of the loop with things and missed the fact that we needed to advertise for the additional appropriation that's going to go into the general fund. So that's why we're having the additional appropriation part of it done next, at the next meeting. So this way it's, we can track it, it'll go through payroll through our line and that kind of thing. So is there any questions with regards to that?
So no voting tonight? It's just kind of a, just a discussion for informational purposes and then we'll handle this on the 22nd?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
And why is it that we can't vote tonight?
Because we have to advertise for the, I mean, I guess you, well, you can't approve an additional appropriation. You can approve the transfer, but you can't approve the additional appropriation of that transfer because it's going into general fund and that has to be advertised. So it's, and we missed that advertising deadline for this meeting, so we've got it on for the 22nd meeting.
We can just kind of do that all in one fell swoop on the 22nd?
Yes, and even with doing it on the 22nd, we will make all the deadlines and everything so that it will be paid out in the 2020 payroll.
Ms. Cottle, does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Hawk?
I thought I saw something just today as a reminder that they had, the state had to have all that in by the 16th for additional to be approved.
No, I checked with my, um, um, DLGF representative and they will accept additionals up until December 31st because of the, we have a new online process.
Did anybody else see that? Did I dream that one?
What was it that you saw?
What?
What, what was it you saw? I'm sorry, I missed.
I thought I saw something from the state just today that reminded us that, that we had to have everything to them for additional appropriation to be approved for this year. We had to have it in to them by the 16th, I thought I saw.
Yeah, that, that, that memo that we received today did say that, that's true.
Well, thank you. I, I was ready to think.
I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, I see, I see it too.
Well, that's not what my representative stated. She said because we're doing everything online now, we can.
Yeah.
I will double.
Last doing, that's for sure.
Verify that. Maybe, uh, did you receive that email as well, Kim? If not, we can forward it.
Yeah.
It's just Commissioner Bennett emailed the, you know, regular update that we get from the commissioner of the DLGF.
I received it yesterday at 4:45 PM.
Yeah, I just, I just sent it to you, Kim.
No, I did not get it, so.
Okay.
Oh, if.
Yes, Councilmember Rock?
If indeed, let, let's say if indeed that's correct, what we received. Is there something we need to do tonight to try to jump out ahead or it's, it's almost already too late to, to do that? I mean, do, do we have any money we could transfer over into any line in order to do the payout or?
Not in our budget.
I think this is, we could still do that on the 22nd as, as well. Either way, we'll get it taken care of on the.
Yeah.
On the 22nd.
I will say, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I, I will say that, you know, the purpose of this, of that policy was to make visible comp time payouts. It wasn't, you know, there's nothing magical about having them paid out of the council's budget rather than any other budget. There's, there's no reason theoretically why they couldn't, we couldn't vote to waive that policy this one time. Because the point was to make it transparent and to tell, you know, make sure that departments aren't just racking up all these comp time and then, uh, and racking up all these unfunded liabilities. And so we, you know, this has been transparent, it's been presented at a public meeting. I see, I, I see no problem with just voting to waive that policy and allow it to be, this one time to be paid out.
Right, thank you.
I, so, okay, so I, I moved to waive the, uh, the, the comp time payout policy for this one payout and allow the, the comp time payout to be made out of the, out of the health fund.
Second.
Second.
Then we will need a line added so that we can pay that out. I can do that transfer.
And simultaneously add a comp time payout line to the appropriate.
Well, do you really need to, I mean, it's going to come out of certain lines, do you need?
Right, it'll just be paid to that, out of the employee's line, right?
It's going to be paid out of your employees' lines because it's remaining in your health fund.
Will it not affect the salary ordinance though, if I pay them out of?
No, because we have this motion.
Okay, very good. That's fine. I'll just transfer it from the other lines and pay it out. Okay.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Is there any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Wilts?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much.
Whoever said government was slow to act.
I appreciate you very much.
Appreciate you.
For that suggestion, so.
Okay, well, we will now, that wraps up everything for the health department. We'll now move on to, what are we on here? Item seven, our coroner's office. We have coroner, uh, coroner, Joyce Shields.
Councilor Wilts has a question.
I do. I just wanted to make it clear that we need to make sure about the 16th versus our next meeting because there are other appropriations we're planning on for the 22nd.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
Okay, all right, because there's a whole, okay, it affects a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah, that, that's on my to do list.
Good luck, Kim. Okay. Counsel, I move to approve the coroner's request for an additional appropriation in fund 1000-0007. Counsel, in the amount of $15,000 in the services category.
I'm sorry, that should be coroner.
Coroner, yes, sorry. Um, yeah, the fund name is coroner in the amount of $15,000 in the services category.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, Ms. Shields. Do you have any additional information on this request you'd like to share with us?
I do. I just want to first thank you, counsel, for your time tonight. So the reason we are asking, not that the request wasn't self-explanatory. We have had an increase in deaths in Monroe County that have come through the coroner's office. It actually has surpassed last year's number by far. We had 208 at the end of the year on December 31st. This year, to date, we're at 249. That's how many cases we've actually been involved with. Our overdose rate is up. I, these are not COVID-related deaths. I don't want to mislead anybody in thinking that that's why the numbers are up, not directly related. Could it be indirectly? Possibly. People being quarantined at home, people pretty much isolated to themselves, close family, not able to get out and do the things that they normally do to get their minds off things, not going to the doctor like they should because they're scared to go out into the public, not going to the hospital emergency department when they should or waiting too late. So that has increased our number of cases. With that comes increased autopsies because if they haven't been to a doctor within the last three to six months, their doctor's not going to sign a death certificate, so I have to find out what happened. Transport bodies, I'm asking for 2,500. So the total should be 15,500 and I think it was stated at 15,000. We do have a van now that has decreased the amount we spent on transports because we eliminated using the ambulance service for local transports. However, we are having to use a transport company to get them to autopsy. So increased autopsies is increased transports. People that do not have arrangements with a funeral home, we can't leave them in Terre Haute, we have to get them back. So a lot of transports back to the county have also occurred. So they kind of work together, increased autopsies, increased transports. So I'm asking for the 15,500 to kind of cover the rest of the year on what I have yet to pay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shields. And I think we may need to adjust that motion to, to the, the dollar amount to 15,500.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, that was a typo on my, on my part.
Move, we amend the bottom line to 15,500.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? This is just a typo here. Any public comment? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Councilor Wilts?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so now we'll go back to the underlying request. Ms. Hawk, did you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to catch Joan before she left to see if she would email us those numbers.
Yes, I can do that.
Any other questions, comments from Ms. Shields? I'll certainly be supporting this and I appreciate Ms. Shields coming. I know it's never fun to have to come and ask for additional appropriation, but we want to, at least I do, and I'm sure the, the rest of us just really want to make sure that you have all the resources you need to be able to do your very important work for the coroner's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Wilts?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, and up next is item eight, our jail and correctional center.
Counsel, I move to approve the jail's request for a category transfer in fund 1000-0380, general fund jail in the amount of $55,000 from the services category to the supplies category.
Second.
All right. And I, we have a motion and a second here, so we'll have some background information. Who will be presenting from the jails? Is it Ms. Elliott?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, hi. So I'm super new at Zoom and so just bear with me. It's good to see you all again. Thanks for the invite. Due to COVID, we've had less population, inmate population than we usually do because there was no courts and they released so many inmates. So our inmate meal fund line is much up there and we can use that excess money in our operational supply line to buy things that we need for the kitchen and more COVID supplies such as cleaning supplies and gloves, masks, you name it, because COVID is not just over yet and we, we want to be prepared. We will not use all that money. Um, I did a little bit of figuring between the four meal carts, they were 37.5. And that's going to eat a big chunk of it, but COVID supplies and clothing for the inmates and towels and all the cleaning supplies that we need will eat a good chunk of that.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? A big, big hug there for Kim. That's nice. Any questions or comments from council? Uh, council member Munson, yes?
Yes, I wonder if purchasing COVID supplies will be tracked for reimbursement.
We, we have been tracking, yes. We have made a spreadsheet and every time we turn in clients, we keep adding to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, Ms. Elliott, for a while we've heard that COVID infections inside the jail have been very low. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is. We have been very.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. McKim?
Well, since we're asking about that, and did, did I understand that there will actually be some COVID tests offered for some rapid COVID tests offered in the jail?
You know what? I'm pretty new at the news. I saw some boxes that were delivered and I'm not sure if these are the lab tests or the rapid tests. And from what I heard a little bit through the grapevine that these would be going to be administered through the medical perhaps. And I'm really excited for it. I hope they start soon.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I thought I had heard that, that, that the jail was going to start doing some.
Yeah, the news spreads fast, doesn't it?
Okay, anything further? Any public comment? And seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve the category transfer from the services category to the supplies category in fund 1000-0380. Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Wilts?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, same.
All right, and up next is our assessors office.
Counsel, I move to approve the assessor's request for a category transfer in fund 1131-0000, sales disclosure in the fund jail in the amount of 50.
Sorry.
Jail, no, there's no jail.
I'm like, whoa, I gotta start actually reading this line.
Jail for Judy.
Well, no, it's not your fault. I typed it. It looks like I copied and pasted and I didn't fix it, so sorry.
Um, let me just take a look.
General Fund Assessor?
Um, yeah.
Sales disclosure.
Yeah.
Okay, so counsel, I move to approve the assessor's request for a category fund transfer in fund 1131-0000, sales disclosure in the amount of $1,183. Is it, and it's from the services category to?
Personnel.
Personnel category. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, and it looks like Chief Deputy Lisa Service is joining us tonight. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good to see that you're all doing well. So this is to correct something that I should have corrected a lot earlier this year. I did a, a change form to change an appropriation line for two of our staff people. I flipped their appropriation lines to make their job titles match their actual jobs. And in doing so, I failed to do a transfer of funds in the sales disclosure portion to fund Tanya's position, our sales disclosure person, because she made more than the person that I switched her with. That makes sense. And then the split part from the general fund, we have extra funds in our personnel line that I'm transferring within the, doing the in-house transfer for that portion of it. So we don't need any extra monies, we just need to move them.
Got it. All right, thank you very much. Any questions or discussion from council on the request? I don't see any, any public comment. I don't see any there either, so we'll do a roll call vote.
Councilor McKim?
Yes.
Councilor Hawk?
Yes.
Councilor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Councilor Iverson?
Yes.
Councilor Wilts?
Yes.
Councilor Munson?
Yes.
Councilor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right.
Thank you all so much and I want to wish you all a very happy holiday season and stay healthy.
Well, thank you and likewise.
Thank you.
All right, and so now we'll move on to a rather large request and item here for our probation department, item 10.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and to simultaneously appropriate those lines in fund 9141-0000, community corrections grant in the amount of $556,732 in the personnel category and $17,614.50 in the services category for a total appropriation of 574. for a total appropriation of $574,346.50.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I see Ms. Street is with us to present.
Hi, Becca Strike, Community Corrections Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. 2021 will be our 38th year of receiving grant from, got grant funds from Department of Correction. In years past, we've operated under one Department of Correction grant for all our programs, but they are now requiring us to separate our grants based on programs, which is why there's three of these. This first grant is our Community Corrections Grant, which funds our home detention, electronic monitoring programs, our day reporting program, and also pre-trial, and this includes funding for staff and equipment, such as our ankle monitors. All our Community Corrections programs are designed to divert justice-involved individuals from jail and prisons where they can remain in the community, which we all recognize is for the best. In our programs, our clients are, provide not only the accountability, but also all of our staff are trained in evidence-based practice interventions. So we're doing things to assist our clients to think differently in the hopes that will help change their behavior so that they're not reoffending. I will also note that, like many things affected by COVID-19, the 2021 Grant Award is different this year. Department of Correction has only awarded the grant money through the first six months of 2021, so January through the end of June. And then after the Indiana General Assembly passes the state budget, the Department of Correction will then announce the grant awards for the second half of 2021. So we're not sure what to expect when that happens.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from counsel? On this request? Okay, is there any public comment? No public comment, so we will have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right.
Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and simult, make sure, hold on, making sure I'm on B. I am. Sorry. Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and simultaneously appropriate the lines in Fund 9147-0000, Community Corrections Grant. And is this correct? Yes. No, it's the Drug Court.
Drug Court Grant.
Drug Court Grant.
Yeah.
My apologies.
Your number is right, though.
Fund 9147-0000, Drug Court Grant, in the amount of... Checking the amounts. We're off here. $78,855.50 in the Personnel category.
Second.
Not much more to add, like I already said, but as you know, Drug Court is one of our four problem-solving courts. Drug Court is in its 21st year, and I checked with our Drug Court Director, and tomorrow they will have their 473rd graduate.
That's awesome.
Yeah. That's great.
Okay, any, any questions or discussion on this request? Counsel member Hawke?
I always like to throw out the kudos, and I wish I could remember the staff person's name, county employee, who came to the grant writing program that we had at the Convention Center that I put together, swung by, proudest accomplishments for the county government. And she wrote that grant for the Drug Court and got that Drug Court money. So you just never know. When you start having, when people start working together and learning together, what we can accomplish. So I always have to, have to say a big thank you to that lady, but I don't remember her name. Is that charitable? Maybe you can find out for me.
Absolutely.
There's somebody in probation.
It was way before my time, but I will, I will look into it.
It was right. It was taught to us by Ball State, a professor from Ball State. They had over 200 people coming to that grant training program, and it was absolutely free to everybody who wanted to attend. It was a great program.
All right, any other questions? Any other comments? Any public comment? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
On the motion to approve new account lines and additional appropriations in Fund 9147-0000, Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, and so we'll now move on to the item that was added.
Certainly. Before we do that, can I ask a quick question about it? If we're not, if we're not appropriating any money to a line, do we add it to the salary ordinance anyway?
Yes, we add that line to the salary ordinance, just in case they might need to move money into that line to be paid for.
Sounds good. Thank you. Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2021 salary ordinance and add the following in Fund 9147-0000, Drug Court Grant. 11411, PSC Field Officer Split, 35 Hours, Civ Poll 3. 11424, PSC Probation Officer slash Case Manager Split, 35 Hours Estate. 11491, CASP, C-A-S-P, Field Officer Split, 35 Hours Civ Poll 3. 17801, Part-Time Range, $14 to $41.44. That's it.
Second.
Okay. Any, anything to add to this from staff? Okay.
I just want to explain that the reason that we go ahead and include the part-time hourly is because sometimes a grant may not be used completely, and they can move the remainders into that part-time hourly so that they can complete that fund. And we've done that with other grants as well.
Thank you.
Got it. Any questions or discussion? Any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to approve the amendment to the 2021 Salary Ordinance, Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Now we'll move on to item C.
Item C. Counsel, I move to approve the probation department's request to create new account lines and simultaneously appropriate those lines in Fund 9149-0000, Mental Health Court Grant, in the amount of $24,668 in the Personnel category.
Second.
All right.
Our Mental Health Court is in its sixth year and has had 18 graduates. This problem-solving court has been such a benefit to our clients who have been diagnosed with a mental illness. They are provided very specific, very directed services, referrals, and interventions.
All right, thank you very much. Any, any questions from counsel? Comments? Any public comment? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Hawke, I don't know if you saw Troy Hatfield's chat message. He thinks it might be Shelley Bontrager that you might be referring to.
It was great news. I remember when it happened, so.
Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, and up next is our counsel office.
Counsel, I move to approve the counsel office request for a category transfer in Fund 1000-0061, in the amount of $344 from the Supplies category to the Services category.
Second.
All right, Michelle, what are we doing with this $344?
I wanted to let you know that I came to you at the last meeting stating that, you know, I asked for the additional appropriation to help with the invoices with regards to WIS, and this is the amount that I'm still short. So this will cover the invoices and take care of us for the remainder of this year with regards to our invoices.
Very good. Any questions? Any public comment? All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Motion passed unanimously.
All right, so now we'll be joined by County Attorney Margie Rice, as well as Michelle will likely have some input for us on this, and I'd like to have a discussion and review of the 2021 Salary Ordinance language regarding salary payments to be contingent upon the strict compliance to the Personnel Policy Handbook. Who would like to start first? Ms. Rice?
I'm happy to start here. So you'll recall during budget times that you approved a 2021 Salary Ordinance and put a fixed date. So there's language that's been in the Personnel Policy or in the Salary Ordinance that ties it to the Personnel Policy, and you added a specific date, so it was tied to the Personnel Policy as of that specific date. I'm offering and suggesting, recommending that you amend the Personnel Policy for 2021 so that it has that additional language that's in your packet rather than the fixed date. I think it accomplishes the purpose of narrowing the language that has been, traditionally been in the, or in the Salary Ordinance, so that it makes sure the council is only tying the Salary Ordinance to fiscally related policies. It will not trip us up in, in the way that a fixed date would. If it was tied to a fixed date, then any changes made after that fixed date, and there have been changes to the Personnel Policy since that fixed date, it would, it would cause us to sort of have to revert back to sort of the old version of the Personnel Policy, and that could get tricky and complicated with benefits that have since been changed. So again, I would simply like you to amend the 2021 Salary Ordinance to include the language that, that I proposed. And Kim Shall may want to weigh in as well about the practical effects of having a fixed date in there, because I know that that's something that she would have to sort of work through.
I just would say that, you know, at times, something was updated or somebody wanted to have a question with regards to benefits that is tied to the Salary Ordinance, we would always have to defer back, and that would cause some confusion, I think, for employees moving forward, having a fixed date.
Thank you. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, as a reminder, because we were up against, like, oh, what are we going to do at a last minute kind of a situation? We put that in as that final date on there as a fixed date, just really as sort of a holding pattern for us to be able to have further conversation. I continue to believe we ought not to even have it in the Salary Ordinance, but, you know, I certainly like this better than what had been proposed. But to make it appear that somehow or the other the county council could withhold someone's salary is preposterous. We certainly would not, and, and if some rogue elected official wishes to do something different, we've had some rogue elected officials we couldn't do anything about in the past. I, I can sit here and name a few, but I won't. So I think it's, it's superfluous to put that in the Salary Ordinance. It has no, it has no reasoning to be there. There's no teeth to it. However, this is certainly better than what had been proposed by the county commissioners, and so support it.
All right, any other que, so I guess, yeah, we do need to do a vote on this tonight because it could potentially require two votes, right?
The law is that an ordinance has to be passed unanimously in the first meeting it's introduced. So if you voted on it tonight and it was, it passed unanimously, you'd be done with it. If you introduced it tonight, did not get a unanimous vote, then at the next meeting, you could pass it just by a majority vote.
Yep.
So it sounds like we should have a motion.
Tonight.
Yeah, you, so you could do, you can do it a couple of ways. You can introduce it with no vote, and then vote on it the next time. You'll need a simple majority. You could vote on it tonight, see if you get a unanimous approval, and if you, you do, you know, I think you're done. But yeah, I, I think that our plan was that it would be introduced tonight, and then you would vote on it finally on the 22nd, and then only need a simple majority. So that was, that was the original plan, I think. Kim, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, who's going to vote against it?
Mr. McKem has a question.
Sorry about that. Does anybody have the, the current language handy that they could share on the screen? It sounds like there's support for it. Why don't we just vote? If, if somebody has the existing language in the Salary Ordinance handy so that we could make...
The existing, the current language that's in the ordinance?
Well, looks like Counselor Hawke.
I was, my only thought was what anybody might want to call a benefit, you know, whatever. But regardless, because I think it, it doesn't hold water. That whole thing in there doesn't hold water. We could not. If somebody wanted to challenge it, I mean, what's it going to do? Go to court? And they would have to do a severability on there and remove that and say the rest of the Salary Ordinance is good, but that's, whatever. I mean, let's just do it.
Okay.
Again, does anybody have something that they could project with the existing language so I could formulate a motion? Or somebody could formulate a motion?
Just, I'm trying to get it to pull up.
Thank you.
In the meantime, we'll check and see if anybody else has any other questions or comments. Doesn't appear so.
And I do think that the record needs to be clear that the council is making a motion to vote on an ordinance, you know, once. making a motion to vote on an ordinance, you know, once and rather than in two, in two steps. Sort of, you know, take leave of the normal rules.
It's this section right here. Now it'd be ordained and it's underlined.
Oh, okay. Counsel, I move, we amend the 2021 salary ordinance and in particular amend the text, "All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook as it exists October 20th, 2020" to "All payments made pursuant to this ordinance are contingent upon the strict compliance with and adherence to the benefit compensation fiscally related and state and federally mandated requirements of the Monroe County Personnel Policy Handbook. It is the intent of the county council that this language will encourage compliance with personnel policies which may have a fiscal impact on Monroe County government." And the intention is that this is a first reading of the, of an amendment to the salary ordinance that may pass if it receives a unanimous vote.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? I need to modify my view panel here. Does anybody, would anybody else like to ask questions? Okay. Any public comment on this item? And seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote on the amendment to the salary ordinance.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, so that is final. That was an added bonus for the evening. Nicely done, folks.
We've, we've removed two items from our next meeting's agenda.
That's good.
It's maybe even shorter if we don't, if we're not allowed to do additional appropriations.
Okay. So now we'll move on to item 13, which is our meeting schedule for 2020.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution 2020-56, 2021 council meeting schedule.
Second.
Michelle?
Good evening again. And what I want to say is I sent you an updated listing of the dates after our discussion. And so you will notice, one of the things that we talked about was the budget session schedule. And so it was brought to our attention that maybe doing five days straight for budget sessions is a little much. And so I went with, with a recommendation with, from Auditor Smith and President Spoonmore to, to put two days in one week and then three days in another, giving a Friday, Saturday, Sunday time to just kind of chillax a little bit before we hit more budget sessions. And then I also moved the, the November work session to the fifth Tuesday. And then the December work session, I moved up to the third. I mean, I said Wednesday, to the fifth Tuesday. And then the work session in December up to the third Tuesday. So that's the changes that I made to the calendar. Everything else stayed the same.
Okay, very good. And I, I think this is a, this is a very welcome modification to our budget schedule. Curious as to what others think. Any questions or comments about it?
What would be the worst way for?
I'm happy.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Iverson?
I, I just wanted to point out in, in the resolution, it does state that meetings will be held either in the courthouse or via Zoom connection. And I like that, that ability to be, I don't know, to have both or either.
No.
Does? I just wanted to cover our bases on that because who knows moving forward how we're going to continue, so.
Is, isn't there a hope or a possibility that we might do both? So maybe I don't, I'm not looking at the resolution right this second, but having it say either or or both.
Yes, I would like that.
Yes.
I just want to weigh in on that as a legal matter. We're still sort of waiting to see what our possibilities are going to be regarding virtual meetings. We are hopeful that state law will be amended in such a way that we're able to do the virtual meetings. And I think certainly if we're, you know, if we're required to be in person, you can always do the add-on of allowing people to sort of join. And that, you know, we can work that out from a technology standpoint, but it's our hope that we'll get some clear guidance from the state early in 2021.
So leave it as is and wait and see.
Keep your, keep your options open. We're, stay tuned. We'll see what happens.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Munson?
Yes. Is this a decision of the governor or another body?
I, the governor has been extending it through executive order. A permanent fix would, would require the general assembly. And we've heard, at least in one CLE, that there may be efforts to limit the governor's authority. There are some people who believe that he's exceeded authority and, you know, issuing things versus via executive order. So I think it's anybody's guess how this is going to turn out when the session starts. I would encourage all of you, if you are interested in the ability to continue to meet virtually and have this option, to write to those you know at the state house. I've also given that advice to the commissioners. I think the earlier, you know, it's early and often you can reach out to your, those who vote generally and encourage them to allow us. We've, we've shared with the public access counselor that we've had a lot more participation from the public this way. And so we think it's been a great thing. But I think that it will involve general assembly action to make it, make it stick.
Permanent.
Counsel McKem?
And just, I mean, Margie kind of already said this, but the other thing to remember is that really the only thing that matters for is counselor participation, counselor voting remotely that we can always choose. And we, I think we've already committed to doing that by appropriating money to the reconfiguration of the NatU Hill Room. We, we already committed to trying to expand public participation by remote technologies. So we can do that without any support from the governor or the general assembly. And I, I seems like I think we're unanimous in wanting to allow that kind of participation in the future.
Yep. Counselor Deckard, yes?
One thing I wanted to add to that, I think it's crucial that we do tell our, our, the legislators we know and anyone else that might vote on it. Indiana, unless, unless something has changed that I am not aware of, Indiana's got a simple veto override where literally the same majority that passed in both chambers, a bill can override a governor's veto with just those same votes. Again, it's generally a courtesy that they either go with a veto or honor it, so to speak. The other thing I just want to say is, when people are talking about this, one thing I want to point out, we've had more engagement in our meetings this year than any meeting I ever saw in 2019 in my first year on this council. I know there's been some comments that this is not accessible and granted, there, there are some difficulties with it, but we've had meetings, easily three I can think of off the top of my head, and I know no one here has probably forgotten, that have been 200 plus. And so on many sides of an issue, I might point out. And so I think that the engagement portion of this is, is serving the public well. In my heavens, if the pandemic had been in a different time, we would not have been able to do what we're currently doing. So there's a lot of things to think about there as we talk with our legislators.
That's for sure. Tremendous, highly spirited levels of engagement this year on Zoom. Any other questions or comments? Okay, any public comment? Looks like Mr. Shelton has a comment to make.
Hi again, counsel. I, I want you, I'm glad to hear you all are for this. I think, I, I hope, you know, you get back to being able to be face to face soon. But I think you need to think that this is not like a switch that's going to be a one zero. This is going to be a gradual thing. As a 74-year-old diabetic, you guys may be all happy to be together face to face long before I am. And I think there's a lot of other citizens who are in the same boat that I am. This is going to be, at best, a very gradual thing coming back. And I'd like to stay involved and be able to participate, and I'm sure lots of other people too. And so I encourage you to help the legislature realize this isn't flip a switch and everything's great. At best, it's going to come back very gradually, maybe even with some ups and downs. And the best way to handle that is to keep this as an option. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote to approve the meeting schedule for the council 2021.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very good. So we'll now at item 14, which is council comments. Have any council members who have closing remarks or comments to make before adjournment? Mr. Iverson?
Yes. In, in the light of us all needing to have continued education and to be humble about what we know and what we don't know, I know I will be taking part in the newly elected official training this week. So I believe Commissioner Githens will be joining me. So we are going to be busy tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday. Learning, learning, learning.
Very good. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, I wanted to share with the general public, and I'm, I'm sure you've probably saw this message from the auditor's office from Brianna Gregory. And she says that she has wonderful news to share. Monroe County just received approval for the remaining amount of our CARES allocation. The remaining $1,022,899 will be wired on Monday. So I mean, kudos to all the people who've worked so hard to, to make that happen. So we've had, we've had a lot of employees working hard to make this work out.
Thank you, Counselor Hawk. Counselor Wiltz?
I just wanted to mention, and I realize this isn't our purview per se, but it affects everyone, that our, our local school district has moved into what they call Phase Red, which means almost all children are, are going to be learning from home starting tomorrow morning. And while some people have been doing this, you know, all along, some people have not and everything in between. And I know a lot of folks have a lot of different opinions about how we should be moving forward with schooling our kids. But I just want to, in addition to reminding folks about that change in status, encourage everyone to have patience and empathy for others while we make yet another transition with our children. It's not easy for the kids. It's not easy for everybody. And we need to be gentle with each other and our schools. As we, I think this might be like the fifth first day of school this school year. So, yeah, just, you know, good luck to everyone making all those transitions.
Thank you, Counselor Wiltz. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, as mother of a teacher of second graders, remember to be kind to those teachers. They're trying so hard and they are really putting in all kinds of extra effort to make sure that those kids have best chance possible. And I'm not sure they're always as appreciated as they need to be.
Good point.
Especially not my daughter. Best.
Further comments?
I do want to say one thing. You, you know, it struck me in the, the middle of our meetings, as it often does, you know, we represent the, the, the public who fund this government and the administration of the county from a fiscal perspective in, in that role. We don't always know everything, but we do get to watch up close the representatives of our county employees that come before us, including our department heads and other elected officials. And it was just occurring to me, I was watching Administrator Cottle doing everything she's doing, talking about line transfers. And one, another minute, she's talking about things that matter to our life in getting through this pandemic. And our folks do an amazing job. They have to manage things that are well beyond the, the specialization that I ever see in my job outside of council. And I, I really want to praise them. I took a public administration class in college that described how complicated it gets for folks that are department heads, elected officials, et cetera. And this meeting and what we get to watch really embodies that. I mean, this is the importance of, of government at work. So I really want to praise them for all that they do. And we're just grateful for them, along with those teachers that we were just talking about. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Well, if there is nothing further, I will adjourn the meeting and we'll see you all next time on the 22nd. Have a good night.